Councilmember, please two.
Here.
Luanna Lou Lou Martin, councilmember, please three.
Here.
Mayor, this is a, there is a quorum of the council president to conduct this meeting.
All right, thank you. Okay, now we'll go on to staff reports and other discussion items.
Okay, so the first item is capital projects. The capital project process started during, when we were discussing the budget process for, for the, for this new fiscal year. We have seventeen capital items that we're proposing for council consideration. Let me bring it up. If there's a consensus from the council to go forward, these projects would be funded through a tax note. The estimated amount, as you can see, is one point two, about one point two million dollars. What departments have done, they have obtained, obtained quotes. As we move closer, if there is a consensus from the council to go forward, as we move closer to the issuance of the tax note, we would go back out and get quotes that are current to, as we get closer to issuing the tax note. Cause at this time, you know, prices change, so if we do go forward, we're proposing a tax note to be issued sometime in February. And I'll go over some of those project items. The first one is extrication tools for the fire department, that's at thirty-nine thousand dollars. There is a mosquito sprayer for eighteen thousand. There's a boom mower and the articulator, those two items go together, and that's about two hundred and seventy thousand. There is a scag mower for the mowing department for fourteen thousand five hundred. A trailer for three thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars. There is a Dodge Ram for the mowing department for sixty-one thousand. A remote control mower with a trailer for eighty thousand. An ice maker machine for the public works department at six thousand five hundred dollars. For the civic center fiber connection, five thousand. There's engineering costs for the public works building for two hundred and fifty thousand. A tractor for the building department for forty-one thousand nine hundred and twenty dollars. There is a forager for the meter reading department for thirty-nine thousand. A belt clip, five thousand five hundred. Another vehicle for the wastewater treatment plant for fifty-one thousand five hundred and sixty-one dollars. There is a lead inventory that we're required to complete per TCDQ, and that's a hundred and fifty thousand. We did just recently add the Huff and Wheeler, and that's at two hundred and six thousand dollars. On the Huff and Wheeler project. This project, this project is estimated to be a three million dollar project. It's funded through a GLO grant. The city stands to benefit significantly from this grant. We recently went out for bids, the bids came in higher than anticipated. After reviewing the bids, there is a gap, a funding gap of about two hundred and six thousand dollars. This amount is needed in order for us to go forward with awarding the contract, which is the reason why we went ahead and included it in the tax note. If we don't move forward, we risk losing the grant, which would be a major setback for the city. So for this reason, I'm recommending, or I'm including it in the tax note. So that brings the total amount to about one point two million dollars.
Okay, all right, thank you, Mary.
Departments are here, if any of you have any questions on, on the projects that are listed.
You first.
What is the Huff and Wheeler project?
It is a, David is here, he can speak more on it.
That would be our fourth pump station, so we currently have three, we have.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so we have, yeah.
I remember now, thank you.
Good deal, yes, it's, we have one on Wheeler.
Maddox.
And Maddox, Goodnight.
In the Maddox company.
This one is four. I think it was, I committed back in the eighties to do this. Why it wasn't done before, it's none of my business now, but we are trying to push for it now, we did get that grant funding. We have two point eight million dollars in grants to do this, but unfortunately the bid came out at three point oh four. So that's that two hundred thousand gap.
Okay, yeah, I remember what it is now, I'm sorry.
One more question, if I may.
Go ahead.
I see that we have a twenty twenty-five Dodge Ram pickup and a twenty twenty-five fifteen hundred Dodge Ram pickup. Are these buy board vehicles, or were they competitive bids?
These are buy board vehicles.
They are buy board?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
There are two additional projects that Mr. Flores just mentioned to me today that he wanted to speak on. They're not included in, in, in the tax note right now, but he did want to speak on those two other projects.
Yeah, a lot of times just to kind of justify why it's last minute, but a lot of public works projects are very hard to identify in terms of dollar amount. Like when it's streets, those are simple because we have historical data to back that up, and we just extrapolate the, the area and go off of historical data. Same thing with water lines, sewer lines. But when you're trying to rehab a lift station, like when you have to re-line the well, it's very hard to be like, yeah, it's going to cost two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and then it doesn't come out. So what the estimate is, it's two hundred and twenty thousand to recoat the Yocum lift station, which is not stormwater, this is actually sewer water. It's two hundred and twenty thousand, but the engineering was seventy-four thousand, so we're short roughly about forty-five to fifty thousand to complete the project. So we already have money set aside, but we don't have enough, we're basically shy about fifty grand. So what else, honey, Mary, we can throw in there to, to add fifty thousand, just to add to the leftover money we have there. It's that Yocum lift station by commercial. It's a well, it's deteriorating on the inside, it's not to the point where we're in the danger zone, but everything we've done has always been reactive, and now we're trying to do things that are proactive, we're trying to catch it before it gets too late. So that's what this project is for. So that's one thing I wanted to add. The other thing I wanted to add was also in our wastewater plant, we're still in the stone age, so whenever we get rid of sludge, we're just basically put it in a big concrete bed, let the sun bake it for about five days, and then we go scoop it with the tractor, put it in a dumpster, and then we go dump it in proper places that accept that kind of waste. So we had hired, going through an RFQ, we had urban engineering to, to look into a feasibility study of getting a screw press. So basically, that would instantly create sludge, so you would get your sludge, and it would basically squeeze the water out and make what they call cake. I know it sounds kind of nasty, but that is the industry term, is to make a cake, which is basically solid waste, and, and then at that point, that's when you dispose of it. So instead of waiting five days to dry it out, it would instantly dry it out by displacing the water in the, in the sewer, in the sewage. He gave us his number back in September, and it's roughly about three million dollars. But this is a turnkey project, it's, you know, this is not something we can do in-house, it's pretty complicated, pretty in-depth, so. So that, those are the two projects I want to bring up. So basically the fifty grand to complete the Yocum lift station rehab and to get the screw press.
How much is the scoop press?
Three million. But that's a turnkey job, that's a, that's with the engineering, that's with the, the machine and to get it installed. And to meet, because the reason we can't do it in-house, because TCDQ requires it to be engineered since we're modifying the plant, so they want it engineered, and at that point, we might as well just get a contractor, that we can have warranty things and warranty set, set in stone and things of that sort.
And there's no grant for the scoop press, just for the first project?
Well, the next.
No, neither of them would be granted.
Me and Mary have talked about this, and we're waiting.
Oh, there's funds already for the first one, though.
Yeah.
But you're, you're short.
Yeah, there's basically like eighty percent of the funds available for the next one, we're just short.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, the screw press, well, me and Mary have actually talked, in the next mayor orals meeting, Adam Hinahosta is going to be there, and he said, you know, all you people with the cities bring some wants needs for something like sewage plants, and we're already planning on taking that to him. But, you know, that should be pretty soon, but I don't know exactly when, because we don't have a, we don't have a scheduled date. But I know the next mayoral's meeting, we're actually going to take that project to him and see what we can get from the state.
Okay. And like I said, we're really trying to be proactive, so we're not in a point where.
No, what about the fifty thousand, though? Can't we just go ahead and add it on this?
That's up to y'all, that's, yeah, yeah, it's up to y'all.
It's up to the council if they want to add that, that Yocum lift station project.
In terms of the screw press, I'm just trying to be proactive.
Yeah.
If, if it takes another year or two, we'll be, I'm not going to say we'll be fine, but we will survive, I'm just trying to catch it early.
Oh, I'm totally, yeah.
I'm tired of being the point where like, hey, guys, we, we don't have a choice, we need to prove it now, and we got to find money somewhere. At this point, I'm trying to bring it early, so if we can come up with a plan, if it's something we could do next year or the year after, that would be fantastic.
No, I'm with you on that, because we've been talking, that's got to be done, and we're just looking for some, from the state, and I think now's a good time to do it.
So if the council is okay with adding the Yocum lift station, that would bring the total amount of the tax note to about one point, one million, two hundred and ninety-five thousand and five hundred and thirty dollars.
I'm okay with it.
Okay.
So I, I wanted to see if the council would consider, and I, I agree with David, it's hard to adding a last-minute project. This, this problem has come up quite a bit, especially in the drought. I know we're not doing any community projects with this, and it's mainly equipment and vehicles, but I've been asked to please, at least request and see how the council feels about it. The veterans park has no grass, and it's all sticker burrs. And they, there, I'm getting requests to see if we could do an artificial turf, not an expensive one like on the football fields. I had asked David, have you heard of this, and it's a cheap, do you know a little bit about the cheaper grass for that park?
So basically, if you go to like a lawn supply company, place anywhere in Corpus or in town, they'll, they'll serve you different grades of turf. The thickness changes, but this one, it's not as in-depth as a, a football field or a softball field. It's basically, you just level some sand, roll this like a carpet, and you nail it down with like some six-inch stakes, and it basically plays a part of artificial turf.
I think the dryness has made it almost impossible for the kids to play on the playground out there, because they're just the stickers, and they're not the, the, the ones that are soft. They're the hard ones that poke the little kids out there.
I'm sorry, but I don't have any numbers, I didn't know about that.
No, I know, it was a last-minute, it was a last-minute item, so.
Are we able to spray for sticker burrs, or put some kind of chemical down to kill the sticker burrs?
I know they have a, a chemical that prevents sticker burrs, but doesn't really get rid of it.
It doesn't work.
More likely just have to till, till the whole thing.
And the only reason, too, I was bringing it up is because the veterans use that park for their events and things, too, with the flags, it just, it's, we're just not caring for it.
I'm just answering the technical question, because the veterans park doesn't fall under my department, but in terms of technical, I, I have dealt with that artificial.
Well, I wonder if that could be something the MDD board could take on.
Do you have an idea?
I don't even know the area of veterans park.
We can maybe approach the MDD board.
Yeah. You want to try that?
We can, yeah, that's, that's, that's something we could, I don't, I don't feel like it'll be too, I mean, the park isn't huge, it's not like our big community park.
As long as it's not like turf for a baseball field, because that stuff is high.
No, not that kind.
Yeah, Mr. Esasi said he would have to research the law to see if that would qualify as an eligible project for the MDD board.
Okay. Yeah, try it, more to try it.
Okay.
Okay.
I just wanted to bring it up.
Yeah, at, at this time, we're just seeking direction from the council. If there's a consensus to proceed, we can begin working with bond council and prepare the necessary documents and bring it to council in February.
If it's not a qualifying item for the MDD board, could we see about adding that artificial turf for the veterans park?
We will start working on it.
Just to see if we could get quotes, if, if not, if it's too costly, I, I understand, it's not something we can do. But if it's not, and it's just like the, the cheap artificial grass that we could have out there for the kids, I know that Kalen's working on that, the cover, the pavilion, right? So it would almost be nice if we could have it, like, usable, even though we have that shade structure, it's still, the kids aren't able to play out there.
This would just be for veterans park.
Just be for the veterans park, no other park, right now.
All right.
Okay.
Mary, on this, is the payment going to come out just at the general fund?
I'm going to ask Sandra. The payments for this are going to come out, I'm hearing projects from both water and shore fund and general fund. So what we're going to do, depending on what, how we divide things, it's going to come out of both funds. It's going to come out of, not the general fund, it'll come out of the property tax. So the, whatever is paid, whatever items are typically general fund items, are paid through the INS side of the property tax rate. So that's where those are going to come out, and then the difference is going to come out from the water and shore fund.
Tax money that's already coming in, not, this won't raise anything.
Well, it's not going to raise your taxes, no. No, this is, yes, no, this is why we're, we're waiting until February to issue, because we didn't anticipate a bond, we didn't put in a bond payment for this year, because that would have raised our taxes. We are having a significant drop in our debt service that will allow us to be able to issue this debt comfortably without being, without having to raise any property tax.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. That's okay.
That's a good question.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right.
What's this three thousand nine hundred and fifty-dollar FDPD CPO bond, what is that?
That was funded through another bond.
What is it? Oh, it's another trailer, okay. So what is the payment on this, Sandra?
You gotta just stay up here.
Yeah.
You're the guru. What is the payments for this bond?
That's part of the fire and police department remodel, that's a sixteen million dollar bond. So according to when we issued that bond, we were allowed to buy stuff for street.
Sandra, I was asking what the payment would be on the tax note.
Oh, I don't know, because I need to, we need to like narrow what we're gonna.
I don't, and I don't think we'll know until SAMCO is in front of us.
Well, we'll know as soon as we narrow what we're going to buy.
Prices.
You know, what we're, we're going to, we're going to structure it in a way, like I said, that isn't going to increase. We are going to have a significant drop in our debt service, so we will be, but I don't know right off right now, because we haven't really hammered out.
You've done this, you've done this a lot of times, can you give me a guesstimate?
A guesstimate, let me look at one of our.
Get the calculator out.
Fifty thousand for.
Fifty thousand either direction, high or low.
It's not, it's not going to be fifty thousand. I can tell you that right now.
Add more artificial grass.
It also depends for how long, a period of time we issue.
We were looking for a five-year notice, but we're hoping.
Let me just bring up my, my debt service schedule, give me a minute.
Is it something we can afford?
Let me just tell you, okay, our debt next year is going to drop by a million dollars. So our debt payment, right now, we're paying three point eight million, next year, we're going to pay two point eight million. So yes, we can afford issue, technically, you can afford to issue this debt next year and pay it off in one year, if you want. I wouldn't recommend that, but you could technically do that, because your debt service is going to drop that significant.
Is that because of the civic center?
Uh, no, it is not related to the civic center, this is just the debt for, for the general fund that's collected through the INS side. So yes, so you would be able to, to, I would say something like this is going to run you about a hundred and fifty to a hundred and seventy thousand dollars.
For five years?
For five years, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sandra.
Okay.
Okay. Think we're good?
Yes.
I'm good.
Okay, now we're going to move into amendments to aggressive solicitation, councilmember Camarillo Smith.
Camarillo.
Oh, there you go, I can't say it right.
Camarillo. So this is kind of a subject discussed with Jason and Mary, and also Chief Perkins. We are just having lots of complaints with the solicitation around town. It's, it's, it's been a problem. So there's, there's a copy in there, we looked at some ordinances in some surrounding cities that we could maybe, you know, kind of do, draft ours after. And this is what I believe Mr. Esasi worked on for us.
If you look at the, the ordinance, what we did is, we amended what we had previously, I think we had approved something late last year, mid-last year. So we came back and we amended that by including sections in there that address pedestrian rules. And also there was some concerns that we didn't have any intersections that would identify those areas that, that we want to prevent solicitation or pedestrian. If you look at exhibit A on item number three, those are the changes that were made. Three, A, B, C, D, E, N, F. The, the locations that are included here are Farm, I think it's Farm to Market Road, ten sixty-nine, and West Wheeler. Avenue A and, and West Wheeler, Cleveland and Harrison, Cleveland and Commercial, Commercial and Goodnight, and West Wheeler and Harrison. Those are the areas that have been specifically identified in this ordinance. And then also it added a couple definitions under F. Those dealing with median, describes what a median is, and roadway and sidewalk. And everything else stayed in place as previously, as it previously had under the prior ordinance. Those were the changes that were made.
I was looking at over, is there a way, well, next to the Chaparral, we can put some kind of exception in there? For, oh, you know, like for organized events approved through the city, so like the Pildebuo.
That's not in there.
Or if a little lady is doing a fundraiser.
That's what, I can't find it.
It's on the.
I don't have either.
It's the one that they mailed, they sent us.
Maybe issue, issue of permit with no charge.
Yeah, they could still go and get a permit, but there's no charge. I think we haven't had to, we haven't had it stated in the ordinance.
We modeled it after that.
Or maybe.
Because if you waving it, then someone else is going to.
I guess what you're saying is. I guess what you're saying is to waive, to waive permit fees. I guess organizations, charitable organizations.
Yes, charitable organizations or like a Phil the Boot or something with a school, something like that. Some things that, but it'd have to still be approved through the city. They could still do the permit thing so that we know that they're doing it, but it just wouldn't, their fee would be waived.
And they would be allowed at those intersections.
And they'd be allowed at those.
Only, only those types of organizations, yeah, we have.
Where it would, like these, yeah, those intersections wouldn't apply to them.
Like the school and the fire department and things like that.
Did any of these that you guys look at have exceptions?
Specifically what ones, because you never know what could come out of it.
I don't remember. I don't remember looking at that.
Through the city.
I have a question. Instead of signifying specific locations, all it's gonna do is. Make a move to the places that are not identified. Why don't we just say within the city of Aransas Pass? This is, we don't.
Well, that was my other concern is that we don't have, the downtown is a really big problem with the solicitation. Um, I remember Olivia Hill coming in here and that was one of her biggest issues in the city. Is that they sit there in front of their business and, and do this. And it, it, it actually pushes away. Um, tourist and, you know, people from shopping in that area, so.
Right, but if you designate specific areas, all they're gonna do is move to areas that are not designated. So I would be more comfortable having it within the city of Aransas Pass.
If we can do that, it's the whole city and they actually put.
That's, that's, that's the council's decision if.
I, I agree with it.
I agree with it too, because the, the intersections.
It's not really the homeless that are the problem.
No, and they're just gonna move to, they're just gonna move over another street and then do it there.
And they're leaving trash.
Oh, I'm, yeah, I'm picking it up.
Quit picking it up.
I'm picking it up. Every weekend I go and get a trash bag and pick it all up.
Pick them again.
So instead of designating these areas, you just.
Just with the, no panhandling within the city of Aransas Pass.
Within the city limits.
Except for those organized events.
Correct.
Which have to be.
That makes it easy.
Application process, but the fees will be waived. And the thing is, how.
Yeah.
Yeah, talk, tell us, you probably know the law.
Well, I know that specifically for those intersections, we can, because we looked up, we.
Well, it's not really stopping panhandling, it's just keeping people from standing on the side of.
Standing on the side of.
Addressing anybody, like we can't, nobody can do it.
Now, what Jason's saying is if it's public property, by law, you cannot stop them. Well, we're not, we're, we're using the avenue of.
No, you, you're not pro, you're not prohibited from being in that public area, but you can, you can uh, regulate. The activity that goes on in that public area, and that's what we're doing. We're saying that, that uh, by this ordinance, it, I guess, uh, solicitation in certain areas.
Yeah, because it's saying they can't stop. It says right here, um, no person can stop in the roadway. Stand, sit, or remain at an intersection or crosswalk for a longer period than is necessary to traverse said intersection or crosswalk. And that's what they're doing. And this was modeled right after, yeah, that was modeled right after another city ordinance specifically.
Yeah, so basically, all we're saying is that they can't stay put in one area.
Preventing individuals from, from being in that public areas, just doing certain activity that, that's what you're trying to regulate, right?
As long as we have, we've got our eyes and got our teeth and, I, I'd say do the whole, I mean. Do the city if we can, because the problem isn't, get up and talk, come up here. I know you've studied this a lot, so you're gonna give us some insight.
It's the same as your decorum, it's time, place, and manner. So as long as you're doing time, place, and manner in your ordinance, you can do that, so exactly what you said.
Yeah, and that's here.
Yeah, that's how that was worded, yeah, paying, you're right, you're right.
Yeah.
Thank you, Jason.
Yeah, we just want to make sure we do it the right way.
Yeah, we wanna make sure we're doing it the right way.
So leave all the pedestrian rules and then just remove the specific ordinances. And instead of the above provisions, apply to the following, just put within the city of Aransas Pass, Texas. Yeah, because all, like, Elise has a point. We're gonna say not at this corner, but then they're just gonna move to another corner and stand there. So.
We only need to make the change to E and then add a section in there for, to allow organized events.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, permit fee with no cost.
So how, how much in advance?
Before, uh, they have to come before council to get those fees or permits?
No, no, I think they did just go get a permit.
Okay.
Now, the question is, how far in advance do they have to have a permit approved? Twenty-four hours, forty-eight hours, seventy-two hours?
I mean, that would, that's gonna be.
I see you back there, Joseph.
Give you something else to do. Look at this dude. Say, aren't you, aren't you glad you're in a position now?
What was the question again?
They would, like, if somebody goes and applies for a permit, you give it to them and they're good to go right then.
Do you want? Is the day before the event okay, or do you want twenty-four, forty-eight, seventy-two hours?
The day before is fine.
The day before.
As long as they have that, yeah, as long as they have that permit in hand, once they, before they start any activity.
Okay.
Really just prior to the event?
Yeah.
Exactly. I mean, it's the same with any, any other permit, whether it's building, whether it's food trucks or anything like that.
Yeah, so even if they wanna do it Friday afternoon, they come in Friday morning and say, here's your money, let me have my permit, I'm good to go.
Exactly, yes ma'am.
No, no money.
Well, that's, I did not mean to say that.
Yeah, and I don't think.
Here's my application, this is what we're doing.
Yeah.
It's gonna be the day from twelve to five.
Do the application? Or just write their name down and say, here, go have fun.
What's the four hundred for? For everybody else?
No, no, four hundred, no.
We're taking that off?
Yeah, no charge for this.
Okay.
Yeah, if you got a Girl Scout selling a two dollar box of tick, or cookies, and you charge them four hundred bucks, they're not gonna make anything.
I don't know, I told you bought a box of cookies, but they ain't two dollars.
So no fee.
Hundred years ago, I don't know what they cost now.
Right. Removing, removing all that in section E and just putting within the city of Aransas Pass and then removing the permit fee. But that they have to come before. Just prior to the event. And um, request a permit to do it.
Panhandlers, are they paying a fee?
There's no permit.
There's, they can't get a permit.
Organizations.
Organizations, like Girl Scout, Girl Scouts and.
I mean, I'm pretty sure we could create something in office.
It's something simple, yeah, nothing, something crazy, something like, hey, what's your name and this and here, have fun, yeah.
Your name, organization.
Address.
Yeah, that's it, nothing, nothing to complicate you or everybody else, it's something simple.
Yeah, we'll keep it simple for something like that.
Yeah.
But Chief, Council, I would just keep in mind the First Amendment rights of, of people. It's not illegal to, to beg. Uh, you can sit on a, on an intersection and, and you can ask for money. I, I think it's gonna have to be written a certain way. And I think that's where Mr. Esasi will come in.
Not with this ordinance.
Yeah, see, see, that's how this one is, uh, Chief, that it says in there, it's not, it's not addressing anybody, it's addressing everybody. Saying if you're on a sidewalk, crossing an intersection, you have to keep moving, you can't stop.
I, I would just wanted to throw that out there, just to make sure.
I agree.
They can ask for money, but they have to walk down the street, they can't stop.
I know there's some things that are, that are discussed that will have, like if there's a sidewalk. Uh, they, if there's a sidewalk, they are allowed to be on that sidewalk.
Can they camp out?
That, that when it comes to the.
Not standing still asking for money though.
Yeah, and you can, of course, it's all about the safety of, of the, the pedestrian and for the, the people that are driving. Cause it's almost like you can't have someone begging or asking for money or anything like that close to an ATM machine. There, there's a reason for that, and that's because that person going to the ATM machine won't feel comfortable.
Well, and just like Jason, yeah, and just like Jason said, as long as it has the specifics, and this one does. No pedestrian or other person may stop, stand, sit, or remain within the immediate vicinity of any vehicle stopped on a roadway. So they can't, they can't stand there and.
Okay, you're saying, David, they can walk up and down the sidewalk, but they can't walk up and down the road, right?
Right, what, what I'm saying is the sidewalk they are allowed to be on, but I think y'all are addressing that, it's just when you're stopping. And, and, and at the intersection and, and it could cause a, a, a person like driving up to stop at the stop sign. It may make them feel uncomfortable or safety, you know, and that's what you're going on is, is the safety portion of it.
Okay, well then we'll make those changes and bring it back to council.
Okay, thank you.
Alright.
Moving right along.
Now, we're gonna move into draft ordinance on short-term rentals.
Let me just, just real quickly say that this ordinance came to council, I guess, wanna say about maybe two or three years ago.
Been a while.
Yes, it's been a while. And um, at that time, there was some discussion, if for whatever reason, it just never went forward. If I recall, there was some questions regarding registration fee, noise concerns, and I think there was a, a few other um, concerns that they had. Um, we're bringing it back. Um, J, um, Joseph has been working on, on updating and revising that ordinance. And he's gonna go over a few, um, some of the highlights of, of the draft ordinance.
Okay.
I think most of y'all have a copy of it.
Yes.
You do, okay.
So the last draft ordinance had a lot of missing pieces. Um, basically it says section definitions and didn't have any definitions to follow on. Same with enforcement, same with um, pricing and items like that. I've gone in there and put more specifics in there. Uh, if you wanna follow along on page two. I placed the definitions, what exactly uh, is considered accessory, short-term rental. Uh, occupants, what the owner is, what the operator is, you know, get very basic about it. Because residents will ask those questions. Next up is uh, short spiel about the short-term rentals. On page three, I have registration and permitting. So we stayed in there that local contact person um, must be assigned for each unit. And they must be available twenty-four, seven. Uh, just because anything could happen at an Airbnb, Verbo, whatever the case is. Hot water goes off, air conditioner goes off, um, lights go off, plumbing turns off, for whatever reason, someone needs to be available to answer. Uh, we have maximum occupancy rules. Uh, this is pretty cut and dry with other cities that regulate Airbnbs and verbos. And everything in between. On page four, we have. Trash toters. So we have specific dates on here, March first to September eighth. There's a certain uh, amount of toters that they need. Per room of the house, building, structure. And that's the, the reason for that is it's a prime tourist. Time, basically. Uh, that's what's considered in those months, it's prime tourism. So more tourists means more trash, and we don't want trashcans overfilling on the side of the road and stuff like that.
I like that. I'm glad you put that in there.
Offseason is September ninth to February twenty-eighth. And at that time, uh, it can be reduced to just one total, one dumpster. Actually, at the moment, we don't regulate any short-term rentals. We don't regulate.
No, I mean, have we had problems with them, with the trash?
Not that I've heard.
Well, no, he's got, Port Aransas led the charge on this because they were, got inundated with them. And during summer times, they would fill their can up and fill everybody's else up on the street.
Exactly.
I'm just curious, I just didn't know how much short-term, or how many short-term, we had, we had any issues. I just hadn't heard.
That's our thing, I think.
And I believe we, we haven't heard any issues about that because we don't regulate short-term rentals. So no, there's no way to complain about them or anything like that.
We had any problems with the police, really with any?
No, ma'am, none that I know of.
With any verbos or Airbnbs? Okay, that's good.
Yeah, no, I brought this up, because I think we're around, what, sixty registered that we know of? And I mean, the word is, there's a lot more around that aren't paying in. Yeah.
I just was curious if there was, I mean, I don't have a problem with.
Yeah, absolutely. Uh, next up in that area is registration fee. So it does state that council will basically assign. Registration fees, permit fees for uh, this type of uh, permit. Uh, what I have seen from other cities, and it's around the ballpark, I've seen one seventy-five, I've seen two hundred. I've seen one fifty. I went ahead and placed one fifty for the registration. And then I placed a hundred for the renewal. Uh, that can be changed at y'all's discretion. Um, it all depends on what y'all recommend.
I'm good with that.
Yep.
When you talk about what you've seen, are you talking about our neighboring towns?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
How, is that a year, or is that just a one-time fee?
It is for a year.
But the renewal is a hundred.
A hundred, yes.
Oh, okay.
And I go into detail um, at the bottom at validity.
Okay.
I'll go into that section right now, actually. So the permit itself is uh, good for an entire year. It'll end December thirty-first. Whether you apply for it, December first, it'll end on the last day of that month. I put a grace period of one month. That way, the resi, residents do have time to come in and reapply. Uh, once that grace period is over, they just have to apply for a brand-new registration, basically.
How are you gonna, with all the existing ones, how are you going to get the word out that they need to do this? Do we have any kind of?
That one would be just.
Do we have a way, we're gonna get in contact with them?
We can post on the internet?
Twenty-five.
Yes, well, Sandra has um.
Right now, we do have registered, we, I collect the hot feds in my office, so there is a form online right now. That we do require all, either your hotel, motel, or an Airbnb to register. I get calls, I direct them there, they submit the form, there's no fee. I've been telling them that this is in the works now for some time, that there may be a fee. So I have contact, I have contact information for about twenty-five. So that's what we are collecting on. I know that there's, like you said, there's a lot more uh, out there. Um, but those are the ones that have called and registered, and usually it's people that are buying new property. And they wanna know, you know, what the process is for an Airbnb.
That was a long time ago, before I was up here. I just, um, on the new water, like when someone sets up new water, would that get added to it, like as a question? Is this going to be, is it gonna come around or whatever?
I don't think it's on there, but it's something that most definitely we can add. The form is an edible, we can edit it and, yeah.
With new people buying, and if they're already anticipating that, it's on, not that everyone's gonna be on this, but at least it's maybe.
Yes, yeah. Uh, that's something most definitely they want, if we want, we can go ahead and make adjustments to the form, that's, that's a quick fix.
Hopefully get some of them, catch them with, if they already know that's why they're buying it.
And another thing, like making contact is in our flyer, like every, every time we send out the bill, we have the opportunity to, to do a flyer. So we can send out a flyer, encourage uh, the owners of those uh, properties to come in and register and start paying their taxes.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna suggest, that if, if this is approved and it goes forward, we can include something in the utility bill.
Okay.
Aside from posting on the website.
Yes.
Is there a number to report suspicious behavior?
Yes, I'm actually getting to that also. So, next up on the next page will be uh, minimum standards of conduct. Uh, just goes over basically uh, rules of conduct. Uh, we have the noise and nuisances uh, codes in there, that way they could reference, the owner and customers can reference off of it. Uh, we also have an inspection in there that will be conducted once they register. So we'll go in, basically do a safety check of the house, making sure that everything's safe for customers to come in and sleep.
Is there a fee for that?
No, it comes with the permit. Next up is complaints and reporting. So the complaints and reporting will be done, of course, by my department. Uh, it'll be a mixture of myself and code enforcement, uh, that'll deal with any complaints and reporting and doing the inspections for those complaints and reporting. We do have a clause in there that states that if there's more than three verified complaints. That the pro, the property will be subject to suspension or removal of that Airbnb status or short-term rental status.
See, Joseph, I see here that on the complaint submission, they can submit the complaint through the online reporting system?
Yes, so it's no different than reporting a code enforcement complaint.
Oh, okay.
That's exactly what it is. If they're violating anything in this ordinance. If they're violating anything in this ordinance, then code enforcement needs to enforce that.
Disorderly conduct and fighting and all that goes to them.
What is it?
Those complaints go to them.
Actually, it goes to us and then we address the owner.
Disorderly conduct, fighting, loud parties.
Yes, yes, they will know of all the rules and everything once they.
But, once you get those complaints, y'all don't deal with that, do you?
Not necessarily, no.
Let him do it.
Yeah, it would be, it'd be.
We would usually get the telephone.
Something like that, yeah, it would be the police department.
Yeah, you guys don't go out there and do that.
Yeah. Start fighting at two AM, you're not gonna call.
Said no house parties.
He won't answer the phone.
Tino's gonna be right there with him, now y'all are good.
It's like, yeah, we're good, it's fine.
So, the next page shows an appeal process, if that ever happens and you got your three strikes and you're out. Or it gets denied in the first place for some type of safety concern. Uh, there is an appeal process that they would be able to go through with my department. It starts at my department and if it is continually denied, it eventually comes before council.
I like this thing, you did, you did a good job on this, Joseph.
Thank you.
Good job.
So, after that, it's all, of course, the legal jargon, the severability clause and the sign-offs and everything like that.
Nice, good job.
So, if there's anything that y'all see in that ordinance that needs to be changed up or added or taken away, let me know. And I'm more than happy to listen and change.
So, if the council is okay with the way that it's written, we can.
It's an Airbnb and you're, you're basically auditing them? Because you said you were gonna go in and inspect them.
Not auditing, it's more making sure that it's safe to actually sleep in that building.
So, if I have an Airbnb in town, you're saying that you gotta come in and inspect it to make sure it's safe to be in?
Exactly.
How are you getting away with that if I don't want you there? Because you're making an ordinance, I don't have to let you on my property.
That's absolutely correct.
But you can't, you can't make an ordinance like that, though, it's against the law. I have a fourth amendment right to keep you off my property. If I'm just renting it, my renters have the right to keep you off their property. So, your ordinance is not correct.
Well, I think then what they do, they just pull your permit, say, that's fine, we won't come back, you just can't, you won't have to pay into hot funds anymore.
So, Jason, how is that different from a hotel? Please, because I'm, I'm, I'm asking, because I really.
As a hotel guest, I don't have to let you into my property either, I'm renting it.
Right, but the hotels have to be inspected to get a COO.
We go in every time.
That's correct, yeah, you get your initial for your business and that's it. If you want to come back.
Would you just be inspecting the initial time?
It'd be just the initial, I'm not going over there every month.
Oh, okay, I misunderstood.
Before.
Thank you.
I thought you were going every time.
Yeah, I thought you were checking.
With housekeeping.
Okay, okay, so again, if the council is okay with the ordinance, the way that it's written, we can bring it back at a future council meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
We're good.
Just state on the ordinance, it's an initial inspection, not a continual, just the initial inspection.
It's the initial and then it's the.
Just the renewal, right.
So, initial.
I'm carried away whether it's in there or not, because I also.
Okay.
I'm also like, eh, we're in a house, I don't think this is gonna be multiple people in an house, so.
Yeah, cool.
I get it.
I'm really not trying to stir the pot, but I just want to throw this out there because to me, you know, I'm, I'm all about fourth amendment and everything, believe me. But to me, this, this seems like it falls in line the same as like foster home cares, those kind of businesses, home daycares, or even just a regular commercial business. When they get a CFO, I'm correct, they, they're subject to routine inspections at any time, right?
So.
According to fire code, anyway.
So, for something like this, it's mainly residential properties. They get a, they get a CEO whenever, of course, they build that property and they have their final inspections, so they get issued a CFO. Other than that, I mean, there is no other CFOs that there would be issued for the Airbnb itself.
But it's just. But it's still considered a commercial property.
I don't, I don't think so.
Because they're drawing a revenue.
It's still somebody's home, so sometimes they still live in the home.
Right.
Yeah.
But they're making money off of it, so he's right, it's commercial.
It's, you wouldn't, you wouldn't consider. You wouldn't consider a rental property that's long-term rental, you have a tenant in there for two years, three years, you wouldn't consider that.
We never go in there.
Yeah, it's still residential.
I would, I would just be concerned about falling in lines with like the, the foster homes or home care facilities where there might be some sort of life safety concerns or anything.
I, I can see what you're saying, but then that'd fall like under general business where the short-term is still gonna stay zone residential. Like that, I think I'm right saying that, right, Joseph? Yeah, that'd be the only difference. Okay, we good on that one? All right, now, we're gonna move into discussion, sip and shop district ordinance, council member Smith.
Yes.
May I reflect that? For the record, council member Martin has filed a conflict of disclosure form and she will not be participating in the discussion of item two point four regarding the sip and shop ordinance.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, um, this, this item was, is being brought forward by council member Camarillo Smith.
Mm-hmm.
So, I, I believe you have some information that we distributed to the council about the sip and stroll district.
Yep, um, so, this actually came forth actually by some interested business owners. Elise and I did a walkthrough downtown, we spoke with a lot of the business owners downtown and they're really excited about the idea of doing this. I think we just have, we just have a little bit of work ahead of us to define the area and define, you know, what we're going to need for the area. Of course, Joseph will have a big part in this. I don't know, Joseph, did you get a copy of this framework, of the framework and boundaries type? Okay, so, basically, it's to create an area within the city where patrons and participating licensed businesses may purchase alcoholic beverages in approved containers and carry them while walking within the district. Um, and that is only a beer and wine, it's not hard liquor. Um, and this would enhance tourism, support local businesses and activities downtown within the coastal zones while remaining, maintaining public and safety and regulatory compliance. When we started looking at this, we just have to follow TABC guidelines. Um, it doesn't, nothing goes through them, it's actually a city ordinance. And I, um, looked into multiple, um, cities that are doing it and that have done these type of, of districts within their cities. Um, downtown Bryan, Texas, Elgin, Texas, um, they have a depot social district, Fredericksburg, of course. Now, Fredericksburg started doing just Main Street and openly allowing the beer and wine. Um, but now, they have opened it throughout their city because they have vineyards everywhere. So, basically, anywhere in Fredericksburg, you can stand outside and have a beer. Um, San Antonio, down the Riverwalk, just not street level. Bastrop, Texas, uh, has a central business district. Ordinance that allows on and off-premise beer and wine consumption within the mapped district area in Navasota. Um, Texas, I think I actually printed that copy and sent it. Um, they adopted a downtown alcoholic regulatory, um, area to, to allow that. So, um, I know this will have to go before the planning and zoning.
We have since done some research and there's a couple of ways in which we can, um, create this sip and stroll district. We could do it either by, um, going through the planning and zoning and creating a district, like a, like an overlay district, or under our city code of ordinances, we could create it under the alcohol beverage chapter and just amend our city code.
That would be easier.
If we went through the planning and zoning, we would be required to do a public hearing and go through P and Z, create the overlay and then bring it to council. What I was gonna recommend is do it through the city code of ordinances under the alcohol, um, chapter, but still, I guess for, for public input, still hold a public hearing, even though we wouldn't be required and do like a third, a first and a second reading ordinance, just to get community input.
I agree, I agree with that.
That would, that would be my recommendation, Mr. Esasi.
Do you have timelines on there?
There's timelines, yeah. No, there would be a timeline, would be daytime. Um, I initially had nine AM, I mean, ten AM to nine PM, I feel like nine PM is still probably a little too late. We could do eight PM. And the only reason I said eight is because if someone's at seven oh five and they still have a beer in their hand, then that, they, that hasn't given them time, now they're out of the compliance.
It stays dark until nine almost, I mean, it's light until.
Yeah, but just kind, I mean, the time, and that would, that would be good to get the input from the citi, you know, the citizens and then the business owners. I know that the business owners would like, um, to provide, the ones that are definitely supporting this. So, when we do have that public hearing, if there's a way to notify them so that they know that they can come and speak on it and give us their ideas, I think there's a lot of excitement around it. You know, we have that, I know that it'll, it'll be extra work, we'll need trash receptacles, safety, probably monitoring. Um, the speed limit's thirty-five, I don't know if there's a way to decrease that speed limit downtown or not.
You'd have to go through text.
I'd say, I'd piggyback off of that, too.
She, do you got any thoughts on this? You got any thoughts on this? I'm sorry, do you have any thoughts on this?
No, I think it's a good idea, I mean, my only concern would be, uh, over intoxication of being out there.
And then you just handle those specific situations.
It's, it's, it's legal to, to be a danger to yourself and others.
Yeah.
Um, and to have somebody walking on the sidewalk that's extremely intoxicated and then goes out into the road like you're saying on a state highway and get hit, that would be my only concern, but, but, uh.
And when I've looked up on cities and how they handle that, they just do it on an individual basis. I mean, they get in, they, you, you, yeah, you're just, yeah, that's it.
Why, why, my question is, why are you starting this at ten o'clock in the morning?
Yeah, they have mimosas, that's when you shop.
So, now, we got a bunch of drunk women out there.
There's nothing, there's not, mimosas don't get you drunk. It's, it's really, um, it's really a way to, um, bring in some, you know, maybe some business attraction downtown and really some appeal. This is something that, this is something that would stand us out of all the surrounding cities. They do have it in Rockport, but they only do it for certain times and certain periods where this would be, um, it would be all year round, um, that we would allow it. And then, we could have businesses down there doing their little frozen daiquiris or whatever.
So, Jason will put a blender in the gym.
Yeah. Really hoping that this is gonna generate more businesses wanting to come in downtown because they're, wanting to get that.
Well, and if you have, if you have a little glass of wine in your hand, you're going to shop, you're going, I mean, I'm gonna have my husband's credit card, I know I'll shop. So, let me just.
Hope he's not watching this now.
So, about this idea and everything, um, I did want to piggyback back off of something that Chief Perkins had, uh, mentioned. It is a state highway and it might be something that Mr. Esasi will have to look up.
We, we have, so is, so is Fredericksburg, it's highway ninety.
Oh, it is, okay.
Yes, it is allowed.
Okay.
It's allowed.
And it's a lot of people walking.
Yeah, and I think they're staying on the sidewalk, I mean, yeah, get in the street, you're in trouble anyway.
Many times and it's a good time, so.
I would, I would like to see, and I would like to see a protected light. Um, we don't have one at, um, the corner of Goodnight and Commercial. Goodnight Avenue and Commercial only has one protected light if you're turning towards Port Aransas, if you're coming, if you're turning this way, there's no protected light. Um, I don't know if that's something we could go through text dot, at least doing a protected light there.
And where was it again?
It's at the corner of Goodnight Avenue and Commercial. It's only a protected light one way, but not the other way.
If you're, if you're at the light at Goodnight Commercial, like facing north, no, if you're going.
If you're turning toward Hoops.
Yeah, if you're facing north and you go to take a left on.
It's not protected.
It's not a protected light, the other, the opposite way is.
The opposite way is.
Yeah, I, I know, yeah, I know exactly what you're, where you're saying now, exactly.
Yeah, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know if it's because of that.
Yeah.
It's still text dot's light, isn't it? It's still text dot's light. Yes, yes, sir.
And so, the area initially, um, Joseph, that we had discussed was, let me see if I put it on here, I know I did it.
You wanted to go to Cleveland.
To.
Wheeler, right?
It was, uh, South Commercial Street, beginning at the intersection of West Wheeler Avenue, right there at the corner of, um, McGrath. Yep, McGrath Ford.
McGrath, my bad.
It's not commercial anymore.
Yeah.
Um, and then, actually, not East Nelson, it would actually be extending to.
Cleveland.
Um. It would actually be extended to Harrison Boulevard and Greenwood Avenue, where it shows they're both intersect right there because the sidewalk goes all the way, right there, right there before that Cash America Pawn Shop. And then, all the intersection, intersecting streets that are, um, within that downtown district.
Is this gonna put a strain on your guys' chief, on your department?
Put a what, sir?
Put a strain on your department?
A strain?
It depends on, I, I guess I'd have to, I guess I'd have to see it to, 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 you know, actually grasp how much it's gonna, how much people is gonna be involved in this, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah.
Yeah. Uh, it, it could, I'm not saying it won't at this point, but I'd have to see it. I mean, it could be, it could be where, you know, there's not enough people and they're not getting rambunctious or whatever, that it, it's not needed uh, for extra peo, but I could be coming in front of y'all at some point and asking for, for an extra body or, or two that we could have somebody down in the downtown.
If it got that busy.
Dedicated to that area.
Well, I like us doing it as an ordinance, too, because that makes it easy. For some reason, we do this and it's like, there's no reason to continue it or if it isn't being a huge problem or something, it's like, okay.
Yeah, right, and that's what, and, yeah, and that's what I put for an eval, yeah, an evaluation.
Put in there that you're doing it on a trial basis to see that it works out instead of making an ordinance and doing it.
But it is, it's gonna be part of it. It's gonna say an evaluation and sunset clause, it's a twelve-month pilot with metrics. Um, we could look at increased, uh, business sales, foot traffic, um, also look at incident reports, the cleanliness, and then we review it after that twelve-month period and we can make adjustments if needed. Shut it down earlier, do whatever, or, you know.
Councilman Haskins, I'd like to also say, if, if, if it's something like that, you can also have, if the individual businesses there could maybe get together and, and, and hire an off-duty officer to be able to work those areas as well, uh, during their off time.
Like a security guard.
Yeah.
Ruth, we could actually ask the businesses that if they are gonna serve, especially those that are gonna serve and charge and let them in, that they put a receptacle, a trash one, outside their business that they take care of, so it's not extra work on our people.
Mm-hmm.
The thing about it is, though, is the over-serving, you know, who's gonna, who's gonna be responsible for over-serving? And I, I can tell you from my point of view, in my experience, I can't stand a drunk unless I am one. And you get a bunch of them down there.
Well, we're talking about, we're talking about during the day, we're talking about shopping.
They still get drunk.
I don't, I don't see this even being like a big, a lot of people in the beginning anyways, because we've gotta get the businesses out there first and, I mean, we're getting some, but it's gonna take a little bit of time for it to traction anyways.
You just don't want your wife to go out there and shop.
She doesn't drink either, I mean, I, I can just see problems.
So, I think we've gathered enough information where we could go back and bring back an ordinance, a draft ordinance for the council to look at. But I did wanna go over some questions that I received during the day.
You'd be one of them.
So, the first one that I received was, currently, there is no open container law in AP, so what is the benefit of having an ordinance?
I can answer that. Being, being that we don't have an ordinance that governs or regulates open containers, uh, in the public, that's the reason we would need to create this district, because it would provide a safe haven, at least for that area, right? So, that people can safely walk, you know, drinking or sipping their, their drink without being arrested, right? Because even though we don't have a, an ordinance, there is a state law that prohibits that, right? So, again, as long as they stay within that, those confines, under this ordinance, they'll be okay.
Mm-hmm, so that's the purpose for the ordinance, okay. The second question was, how do neighbors feel specifically the vintage and the blessing shop? Why at this time, we don't know, um, but we do plan to, once we do start this process of sending out notices.
That was not one of the businesses we went into, we went into, um, several others when we were down there. We didn't talk to them.
Okay, so, we will be sending out notices once we start this process. The, the, the next question was, cups, logo cups are very expensive, who is going to pay for the logo setting and cups? Can a sticker be used instead? What, some, some of the.
I don't think you have to have, I think it just has to be a plastic cup.
It has to be a plastic cup, but the, some of the research that we have done is what city, the cities that have this sip and stroll, they provide a label, um, and it's a sip and stroll label, and they give it to those business owners that are participating.
Oh, to seal like the lid on it, right?
Uh-huh.
Yeah. Oh, to seal like a lid on it, right? Yeah.
And they, they affix that on, on the cup, but those labels are per- Um, that, that's the research that we have done, where we find that-
It's a sticker?
It's a sticker, and you put it on the cup, and-
It's like an air-sealed sticker on top, and then you can punch a straw-
Identifying, that was purchased during, or within the district.
Just the business would provide that.
Well, either the business or we can, or the city, and the, the, the research that we have done, again, the city is the one that has provided those stickers. What they're requiring is, those businesses that are participating would need to register with the city, and at the time that they register, the city will provide them with those stickers. So, that, that's what we were looking at.
And those stickers are to keep them from opening the cup and putting more liquor in it or something?
Well, it's not on the lid, it's on the cup.
It's sealed.
It, it's on the cup. The, the sticker's not on the lid, it's on the cup.
Okay.
That's interesting, cause I, I go to Fredericksburg about four times a year, and none of the cups have ever had a sticker on it. And they all have like the company logo on it.
Jason knows.
I don't know this.
They also have the company logo on it.
This is a great, this is a-
Fredericksburg, you can break your own drink and drink while you walk. There's no law against it.
There's no law?
No.
No.
No, so you're open, you don't need any of that. If you're gonna make the ordinance, just make the ordinance. You're just gonna have to regulate drunk people, but-
Yeah.
Comparing to Fredericksburg, Fredericksburg's high-end, we are not, so you're gonna have a lot of-
But we're, we're, we're trying to do a coastal- We're Dollar Tree. We're Dollar Tree, Fredericksburg.
I do believe what, what the city manager's talking about is, like, we, we're having a, a, a business come in that's gonna be selling margaritas.
Yeah.
As long as you have, like, on, on the straw or wherever where there's a seal-
Seal.
You're, you're, you're good. It's when that seal's been broken-
But that's because they're driving, and it's a drive-through and they're picking it up.
Yes.
This isn't for walking with it.
No, no, walking, you're, you're okay walking.
You're fine with walking.
The open container's driving. We do have an open container law for driving.
Yes.
Okay, so the next question is, who is going to pay for any damages caused by intoxicated people to other people, buildings, or property? That's a civil matter.
Yeah, that would be the first.
That, that is a civil matter.
Yep.
And the next question is, is the city taking out additional insurance to cover damages potentially by the sip and stroll? No, we are not gonna take out additional coverage, not the city.
It's still a, it's a, it's an individual, every individual would be dealt with. And it's not, it's not a bar scene type. It's not for after-hours nighttime. It's during the day. Um, you go walk down the sidewalk, have your glass of wine, and go into shops and, and shop. That's the idea.
Yeah. Okay, so, if there's a consensus, we will work on a draft ordinance and bring it to council, so we can start that process.
I like it.
Wine in the rainy- I have concerns about it. I'm not in favor of it.
I think it'll go with more like whatever the business is.
I've just seen too much stuff should happen. Well, if we wanna, if we wanna do it for six months or, or something, put a trial document on there and see what happens.
Trial like twelve months?
So, are we looking at a test period? Are, are we looking at a test for about a year? Yes, okay.
Oh, yeah, I was like, I like the idea of a test period before we actually put it in stone.
Mm-hmm.
Um, that way, if anything, we could regulate any changes that are being made.
I think we will need to have a couple of trash receptacles. I mean, there's no way we're gonna get away from not having a couple of trash receptacles downtown, cause then you're just gonna have cups on the ground if, if the business owner doesn't have the trash recept- receptacle out there. So, we're gonna need some. Okay, all right. Okay?
Okay, now, City Mural Projects, Councilmember Chacon.
Oh, you're gonna love this, cause I know you love a mural.
Yeah, whatever, paint. I know you go for paint.
So, the, um, the building that faces HEB's entrance, that's across from Goodnight, I think it's bluish-gray right now, the owners have given us permission with approval, firstly, what their approval before it's done, to do a postcard mural. And, so, there's a couple, I think we've got like three pictures here that show you, they're, they're being done in a lot of the small towns, even the bigger towns, but it looks like a postcard. There's one from Crockett, um, the next two are my favorites.
Uh-oh, gosh.
There's one, that's Bernie, and then the next one is Florisville, but they're typically where people stop and they take a picture in front of. So, people, this was gonna help hopefully with the downtown part. Even going to HEB, they're gonna stop, get out of the car, go across the crosswalk and take a picture, and once they're out there taking their picture, hopefully, it's gonna generate and start walking the, the downtown area. Um, so, we just need to go out. If y'all like it, we just get quotes from several artists. I'd like to see, it'd be nice to have some different flavors of ideas, what people think, but, um, I really like the Florisville one, I really like the Bernie one.
For, for a mural this size, we would probably have to go out for an RFP, um, and I know that we can use hot funds. We, um, I'm looking for my numbers here. I-
Yeah, I don't have any idea what they-
So, this would fall under the arts category, and I know the arts category has a cap of about, I think it's fifteen percent of the revenue from the prior year. So, the amount that we have allotted in, under the arts is about forty-two thousand. I don't think it'll be, you know, that amount, but we would still have to go out for an RFP for something like this.
Yeah, cause that would definitely be over twenty-five thousand.
Yeah, it's gonna cost, I'm just, what I'd like to see, too, is on Bernie, get it on there, it's on the bottom, it has like a hashtag and it says Bernie mural. I think Aransas passes long, but we could put like AP mural, and maybe even possibly have, I'd like to get a list, too, of daily on where all our murals are in town. And if we could add that to the bottom of them, it would be just cute, something for social media later.
And it'll be where?
Getting that out there, AP mural, and it's, I mean, we could either number them or they just have AP mural-
Right here.
Once pop up. It'll be on this wall.
Yeah.
It's the wall right there.
Yeah, it's like, if you're coming out, like, you're in HEB and you walk outside, you look straight ahead, it's gonna be right there, closest to the streetlight.
Okay.
So, that area.
Oh, cool.
And, um, yeah, so they just, they just want final approval, and, um,
Oh, that building.
I just want y'all's support on it, approval to move forward, and let's see how much, I, and like I said, I don't have, I don't have any idea what it costs.
No, I have, I have a problem with it because somebody'll be out there huffing paint now.
Oh, well, you know what?
Not bad enough for drinking.
Debbie Downer today, Randy. I'm not even gonna lie.
I say we do it, we, it needs to say Aransas pass.
Yeah, I'm only, yeah, it's not gonna say Florisville.
What?
Yeah, no, you, you, no, you mentioned AP.
Oh, no, 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 the bottom. Wouldn't do it like, look up Bernie's.
Yeah, no, definitely needs to say Aransas's pass. What, what you talking about, Willis?
Yeah, down here at the very bottom, but they just put the hashtag. So, then on social media, when somebody takes a picture and this, they're putting the hashtag AP mural, so then all of a sudden-
Okay, remember, I walked in halfway through this, so.
Okay, y'all good with it?
Yeah, I, I love it.
Yeah, all right, I am.
I'd rather they huff paint than drink beer.
Okay.
Oh, God.
Are we gonna, are we gonna pick the design and the colors, or are we gonna let, leave that to the artist? Or do we want them to submit ideas?
We want them to submit, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then I'm hoping we'll get several artists that want, would be interested in doing it, and they'll submit some kind of proof, and then we pick from those, um, what we like, you know?
Oh, I'd like to bring up, since that signs up for Bernie, um, they also have a sip and shop area where you can do that, by the way.
It worked out really well.
All right, okay, now, we're gonna go into executive session, and, huh? No, that's it. Now, we're going, yeah, we're going to executive session involving a tasing incident as requested by Jason Falwell, Councilmember Chacon, and it is seven twenty-six.
Thank you, guys.
Yes, thank you.